Members will please take your seats. We're ready to move on to the Rules Calendar. Members, please take your seats. We'll move on to the Rules Calendar. Clerk will read the caption to H.R. 4 E X.
H.R. 4 E X by Representative Cox the 28th. A Resolution Condemning Hamas Terrorism. This resolution having been referred to Committee on Rules, that committee recommends that this resolution be adopted.
Representative Cox, you're ready. Representative Cox is recognized to speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Roughly two months ago to the day, or as well as a music festival, tragedy occurred. This resolution is to speak, one, against the terrorists known as Hamas, and number two, that we stand with Israel and the Jewish people. There's an enemy that comes to kill, steal, destroy, in this situation, that enemy who eradicate the state of Israel, the Jewish people, the United States of America, and all that support these causes. There's an individual in 2006. He was sentenced to four life imprisonments for terrorism, for killing Palestinian collaborators and Israeli soldiers. This individual came down with a brain tumor, and remarkably, the people of Israel received surgery and lived. A miraculous healing. In 2011, and he, to this day, that is viewed as the leader of Hamas in Gaza. Just being in Israel back in late August, September, with another representative this year, some of our friends were killed, innocent lives destroyed. A three-year-old girl, close to the age of my own granddaughter, an American, Abigail Moore Adon. She was standing there as her mother was murdered and saw it. She ran with her father, who shielded and protected her, and was murdered and fell upon the little girl. Her two older siblings went and hid. She crawled out from underneath her dead father, ran to a neighbor's home, and was taken as a hostage, three years old. Where did they take her? And where did they take these hostages? Twenty to thirty countries represented that were hostages, some from the state of Israel, some Jewish, some from all over the globe. But this little girl was taken to be put under the dirt in a tunnel. Why in a tunnel and why in the dirt? Complete darkness. The goal here should be that we bring light and life, that we take an individual that has a brain tumor and find a way for that individual to have a life. But to kill, steal, and destroy is unacceptable. It's unacceptable in all regards, and I stand with Israel, and I stand that Hamas is a terrorist group and needs to be eradicated, and the state of Israel must do all that it needs to do to destroy Hamas so the world's a better place. Thank you. I yield for questions.
Gentlemen, yield for questions. Is there a question? You have no questions?
I yield the well.
The gentleman has yielded the well. In the wisdom of the Rules Committee, we will limit debate on this proposition to thirty minutes for those in favor and thirty for those opposed. Whip Park is recognized to speak. We won't start until you get ready.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, I rise to make a point about the resolution that we're voting on. To begin, you know, this is a very, this resolution speaks on a very important issue, and it's certainly one that is very well deserving of consideration by this body. However, because of the importance regarding the subject matter of this resolution, I do not think that it is appropriate for this body to take up this resolution during special session. The Governor's proclamation is very clear, and that we are only able to take up legislative matters that fall under four specific categories per the very clear, plain language of the proclamation, based on the power the state constitution has empowered our governor to do. When I asked during the Rules Committee which of the four do plan on voting yes if this resolution proceeds, I would urge members of this body to not take up this resolution at this time, because again, it is my understanding, based on the plain language of the Governor's proclamation, that it falls outside the scope. With that, Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
Thank you, Whip Park. The gentleman has yielded the well. Representative Frye is recognized to speak to the resolution.
Good afternoon, colleagues. You know, I've really, this has weighed heavy on my mind. It weighs heavy. It has weighed heavy on my mind since my father became a Presbyterian preacher, and the way I was raised. We talked about this all the time. Talked about the conflict. We talked about supporting Israel, and I absolutely understand the positions that each and every one of you may have on this. But I've been called to tell you something, and I want to point out that my opposition to this specific resolution has nothing to do with opposition against anybody. It has nothing to do with the opposition against my Jewish friends. It also does not say that I support a terrorist organization, because I do not. And the oversimplification of this issue is a problem for me, because it's not an either-or. One thing that we are missing is the thousands and thousands of lives, innocent lives, that have been lost, on, in all fronts, Jewish and Palestinian. Now, you know, when I ran for office, I really had to make a decision. You know, I'm from South Mississippi, and I tried to find the intersection of my faith and my politics, so I didn't vote hypocritically. It's one of the things my father hammered into my head, don't be a scribe or a Pharisee. So you know, Geneva Bible, and the Geneva Bible was a Bible that was translated directly from the Greek and Hebrew, that I grew up listening and watching my father learn and memorize. And you'll be surprised to note that the Geneva Bible has different messaging on certain points than our modern-day Bibles, where kings and leaders didn't want you to use some terms like tyrant, so they changed them all. But one thing that is static between the Geneva Bible and today's Bible are what I call the red-letter print. And within that red-letter print, in Matthew, I'm not putting my glasses on, somewhere in Matthew, I've gone on script, you know me, I don't follow a speech script, I got it here, but I can't do it, sorry. So somewhere in Matthew, and we get the Beatitudes, and it says, blessed are the peacemakers. And I can understand how much it means to people to try to not turn the other cheek, to start focusing on, oh, well, they killed this many people, so we need to kill that many people, that is not right. This resolution needs to be a call for peace, a call that condemns the terror, but also a call that condemns the unilateral killing of innocent lives on both sides. And we should listen to that as Christians. I know there, like the preacher said this morning, there's a bunch of different religions in here, so I'm not trying to make anybody offended, but I'm speaking to those who you say are Christian. The quest for peace is real. The quest for peace is real. We are guided. We are called to this body to lead for peace. My ask to you is that we table this and come up with a resolution that condemns the terrorists, condemns the loss of innocent lives, and calls for a ceasefire. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I yield the well.
The gentleman has yielded the well. Representative Hawley is recognized to speak to the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Sorry about that.
I certainly understand that, Representative. I'm with you on that one. You're good.
Today, I asked my colleagues to table this motion, but I would like to recognize Georgians who have made themselves available for us today. Proceeded in the House Gallery are members of Jewish Voice for Peace Atlanta, the Atlanta Multi-Faith Coalition for Palestine, Voices for Muslims, and Christian faith leaders who rise briefly for this measure just in a silent moment of support. Thank you. I would just, I would like to read a brief statement given to me by Jewish Voice for Peace Atlanta. As members of Georgia's Jewish community, we recognize the pain and loss of life that has been endured by families across Israel and Palestine. However, we refuse to allow our government and the government of Israel to twist our gr-. We are deeply opposed to such one-sided resolution that does not mention Palestinian life a single time. We are particularly concerned with lines seventeen to nineteen, which describes the, and we quote, brave Israeli soldiers who are exercising their nation's right to self-defense, and we stand with Israel, end quote. What Israel and their soldiers are currently doing in Gaza and the West Bank goes far beyond self-defense. We have all watched the bloodshed on our sweet babies left alone to die because of the bombings and attacks on Palestinian hospitals. Atrocities, killing, and more civilian bloodshed will not bring back those who were killed and will not save those still held captive. Jewish people are not a monolith. Speak for an entire group of people is not only wrong, but is attempting to manipulate you. There is a sea change happening within the Jewish community and millions of Jews. Solutions or legislation that has no bearing in our state of Georgia. We would hope that this legislative body would focus on supporting the actual needs of Georgians, such as ensuring that all people have fair and equal representation in our state's electoral bodies. This is a message that was echoed also by Churches of Middle East Peace on November thirteenth. In their letter stating that we condemn the collective punishment imposed upon more than 2.2 million Palestinians living in Gaza. We further support a demilitarization of the conflict rather than supplying additional military aid or arms to Israel at this time, for the U.S. already sends $3.8 billion per year in military assistance to Israel for which effectively the United States has not imposed consequences. Additionally, military aid will only prolong Israel's offensive, will lead to more Palestinian civilian deaths, and will not likely be subject to any accountability. Peace with justice is the only lasting solution that will protect the long-term security and sustainability for the state of Israel and self-determination and independence of Palestinians. And for the United States must demonstrate its commitment to the protection of all human life, advocating for a just and durable resolution to this crisis, in which all Israelis and Palestinians must realize a vision of a just peace, illuminating human dignity, and advancing security and self-determination for all. This was signed by the American Baptist Churches of USA, American Friends Service Committee, the Lot Carri Foreign Mission Convention, the United Church of Christ, the United Methodist Church, and the National Council of Churches. Sentiments such as these expressing similarly have been echoed by the respected pastors, Dr. Cynthia Hale of Ray of Hope Christian Church, and Pastor Jamal Bryant of New Birth Missionary Baptist Church, among 1,000 Black faith leaders addressing this to President Biden. Among labor unions, the United Auto Workers of America have demanded an immediate and permanent ceasefire. Finally, I'd like to share an excerpt, a letter from the Georgia Muslims Coalition. It's an open letter to Georgia representatives and senators seeking personal support for an immediate ceasefire in Gaza. It reads, "As concerned citizens who value justice and peace on a national and on a global scale, we are compelled to share our concerns with you collectively about the direction of the one-sided support in this resolution. On behalf of our diverse collective, we present the request to demand an immediate ceasefire, calling for an unconditional ceasefire from all sides to the conflict, to bring United States citizens home, make it a priority policy position for bringing all American Palestinians that are stuck in Gaza back to the United States, to end occupation for permanent peace, to prevent and reverse any temporary and permanent displacement of Palestinians in Gaza and the West Bank. The Muslim-American community has worked tirelessly for decades to deepen its civic engagement with the belief that United States, a champion of democracy and human rights, will play a critical role in fostering a just and fair resolution to the complex issues facing the country, including those that have plagued the Middle East for decades, saying, 'We urge justice and hope that we can find a path forward, working with you and our national leadership to foster a more balanced and constructive approach based on international law, to bring peace to the Israeli and Palestinian people. Sincerely, the Georgia Muslim Coalition in partnership with Al-Hassanah Masjid of Beaufort, Georgia, Al-Madina Masjid of North Atlanta, Albany Community Masjid, the Anhar Institute of Atlanta, Georgia, the Athens Masjid of Atlanta, the Athens Muslim Hub, the Bosnian Community Center of Georgia, the Burmese-Royanga Community of Georgia, the Council on American-Islamic Relations, Georgia, East Cobb Islamic Center in Marietta, the ETHAR of Clarkston, Gainesville Islamic Cultural Center of Gainesville, Georgia, the Georgia Muslim Voters Project, the Greenview Madonna Center of Lawrenceville, Georgia, the Gwinnett Islamic Center of Suwannee, the Hamza Islamic Center of Alpharetta, Hindus for Human Rights, the IKNH Council for Social Justice, the Indian-American Muslim Council of Atlanta, the Islamic Center of Columbus, Georgia, the Islamic Center of Duluth, Georgia, the Islamic Center of Middle Georgia, the Islamic Center of West Georgia in Douglasville, the Islamic Society of Augusta, Jewish Voice for Peace, the Atlanta Chapter, Justice America, United States, La Grange Islamic Center in La Grange, Georgia, the Macon Community Masjid in Macon, Georgia, the Medina Institute of Duluth, the March 15th Forum Combating Islamophobia, USA, the Masjid Abu Bakr in Brooklyn Haven, Georgia, Masjid Al Farouq of Atlanta, Georgia, Masjid Al Kuba in Beaufort, Georgia, Masjid Al Frakhan of West Cobb Islamic Center in Marietta, Masjid Al Mumin of Atlanta, Georgia, Masjid Al Rahman of Cummings, Georgia, Masjid Jafar of Johns Creek, Georgia, Masjid Omar bin Abdulaziz in Lilburn, Georgia, Masjid Sumaya of Peachtree Corners, Masjid Soufa of Kennesaw, Muslim-American Society of Atlanta, Georgia, Muslim Community Center of Peachtree Corners, Georgia, the North American Manapur Project, sorry, Manapur Tribal Association, USA One UMA Project, Roswell Community Masjid, Savannah Community Masjid, the Sura Foundation, Somali-American Community Center Valdasta, Voices of Muslims and Muslims of the USA. All are together in not supporting this resolution. I'm thankful to be here as a man of Christian faith, twenty-five years since my baptism, and being wholly standing alongside them to vote no, should be given the time, but for now, to table this measure. Thank you."
Gentlemen, yield the well. Members will refrain. Representative Roman.
To read Rule 8.1. Has to do with decorum.
Representative, now, you're recognized since we're having this discussion. Now state your position.
I would like to, for the speaker to request the clerk to read Rule 8.1 decorum.
I appreciate the gentleman's sentiment, but we will, I think this body is acting respectfully, and we'll move forward with the discussion. Representative Roman is recognized for to speak to the resolution. Ten forty-five, ten minutes forty-five seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, apologies. As you can hear, this is definitely not great for my voice. So if you can't hear me, please let me know. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleagues, I rise before you today to explain why I will not be voting for or against this resolution. I want to be clear. My issue isn't with the Hamas condemnation. After all, I've been doing it since I was fifteen, and no, that's not an exaggeration, because it's a moment in my life I will never forget. You see, in high school, I was fed up with the kids on the school bus, calling me a terrorist and pointing to my house, calling it the bomb lab. So I decided I'm gonna take driver's ed. I was ready to become independent and start driving myself. Now, little did I know my biggest hurdle would be my parents, who, and I quote, trusted in me, just not the other drivers. But I digress. One day, my driver's ed teacher overheard a classmate mention I'm Palestinian. To be clear, I wasn't part of that conversation, he just simply overheard it. He called me into the hallway and proceeded to interrogate me to make sure that me and my family don't have any ties to Hamas, the terrorist group. I'll never forget how his questions seemed so absurd and beyond comprehension to me that I literally laughed, thinking he was joking. He wasn't. For context, I was ten the first time somebody called me a terrorist. Those experiences robbed me of my childhood and my innocence, and instead of worrying about the typical things a teen worried about, I felt like now, a deep sense of responsibility to not only represent all Muslims and all Palestinians, which is beyond absurd for a child, but also fight all the stereotypes about my community. But I quickly learned that my condemnation meant nothing. It did nothing. I'm not exaggerating. I agreed to a couple interviews at the beginning of October, where instead of talking about what I'm seeing in the Palestinian community, interviewers asked me if I condemned Hamas over and over and over again. I did, on the record, over and over and over again. And yet, there were some people that still wrote in saying they really loved my perspective, they appreciated it, but why didn't I condemn Hamas? The interviewers were flabbergasted. All these experiences recently and in the past taught me, though, is that it doesn't matter. No matter how much my community, whether Muslim or Palestinian, condemned terrorism, no one listened. Imams from around the world signed and shared letters, mosques and Muslim organizations would put out press release after press release every time something happened. Nobody cared, because it didn't fit the narrative. But I'm telling you, something recently shifted in the past few weeks, and people are starting to realize that these absurd accusations and these absurd traps are simply not true. And I personally take so much solace in that. I want to be abundantly clear that my Palestinian-Muslim community didn't support the policies leading to this violence. It wasn't us funding Hamas to prevent a Palestinian state or expanding settlement to the West Bank, as an example. It was Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu, who, as reported in 2019, helped facilitate those cash transfers to Hamas. Even without that important context, I probably would have still voted for this resolution. You know, we don't get everything we want around here. So what's the problem? I can assure you, it's not because this resolution stands with our Jewish community. That shouldn't surprise you. My Palestinian grandfather, who grew up with Jewish and Christian neighbors, taught us there is no Holy Land without the Jews, Christians, and Muslims. He's the reason I started interfaith work at sixteen and the reason I've learned to find beauty in all faiths. In fact, I'm glad that's in here, because to be clear, antisemitism is on the rise, and with it, the rise of Islamophobia and anti-Palestinian racism. And the same people targeting the Jewish community were the same people that threatened my life in 2016. I want to be abundantly clear about that. When I say our fates are intertwined and that we need to fight hate anywhere we see it together, it's not just a talking point. It's also a sincere belief that I hold. My issue with this resolution is two things. The first, this resolution conflates pro-Palestinian rallies and protests as pro-violence. This is and has been dangerous. We've seen the danger this has caused play out with the murder of six-year-old Wadia in Illinois, and the shooting of three Palestinian students in Vermont, one of whom will never walk again. I've honestly been shocked at how pervasive this has been and the outright lies. To give you an example, I personally witnessed. I went to a peaceful vigil to pray for all lives lost in Gaza, Israel, and the West Bank here in Atlanta. A group of about thirty pro-Israel counter protesters showed up. They yelled at us, saying they hoped we'd get beheaded, we deserved to be raped, and they were coming for our blood, and more. We had peace marshals who bravely linked arms to keep them away from us, but at one point, they started swinging at us, hurting multiple people. point, they started swinging at us, hurting multiple people. It was harrowing, and I couldn't believe the vitriol. Now imagine my shock when I saw a blog post about that vigil, saying that we attacked and surrounded them. It was a blatant lie. We had media there, we have video, people saw it, I was there, I mean, we've got plenty of witnesses. They approached us, they yelled at us. If we're going to engage on this issue of protest, then we should be accurate about it. The second concern that I simply cannot move on, and is the most important one, is that, and while I appreciate that there are so many here who have a lot of personal feelings about this, I cannot stand with Israel. Not the Israeli people, but Israel and its current government. I need you to understand that it is not hatred that places me in this position, it's my life experiences. My grandparents were forcibly expelled from their homes by Israel. Three of them have now died without ever seeing their homes again. And one day, I will tell you that story, but today, I want to tell you about all of our constituents from all around the state, including Atlanta, Alpharetta, Johns Creek, Augusta, Dalton, Duluth, Macon, Peachtree Corners, and that's just the ones that I know off the top of my head. A lot of you have said that this resolution has nothing to do with Palestinians, but it does. You see, over the past eight weeks, I have been receiving daily messages from my Palestinian community members, sharing with me that they've lost 10, 20, 50 family members. In fact, I started pulling a list. Here's just four of them that gave me permission. Gad Najar has lost 68 family members. Hani Shawa has lost 31 community members, family members. Vayik Ismail has lost 12 family members. Professor Hassan Rajab at Georgia Tech has lost over 100 family members. Just four people have had to, over 200 family members, killed in Israeli airstrikes. I simply cannot support what happened to them. I keep being told that this resolution has nothing to do with that, but come on now. It absolutely does. You want me to vote yes for bombing these innocent people? And I hear it. I hear y'all saying, you know, "We're doing this to get rid of Hamas." But from my understanding and after talking to some folks who have served, what we are seeing is not urban warfare. This is not the way that you conduct military operations in densely populated areas. This moment in our history is already painful enough, and I will not and cannot add any more to that pain. But I will also not oppose standing with community members who are hurting at this time. And this is why I will not vote for this. I will not engage on this. And I invite you all to join me, because our constituents deserve better. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield the well.
We're glad to have you in the gallery, but we will not tolerate any showing of any, making any noise in the gallery. So if you'd like to stay, you may conform, or you can be escorted out. Your choice. That concludes all of those in favor. Now, we're, excuse me, all those opposed, we now, we will hear from those in favor. We'll start with Representative Penage. This group, you'll have, there's several of you that will be, that have asked to speak. You'll have 30 minutes, so divide your time accordingly.
I ask for your support of this resolution. While I am the only Jewish member in this House, I'm here as a human being, because this is a human issue which affects each and every one of us. On the morning of October 7th until 6:00 a.m., one of the most festive days of the Jewish calendar, there was a ceasefire in existence between Hamas and Israel. But that morning, Hamas fighters implemented plans more than two years in the making. Their instructions were to rape, torture, slaughter, and kidnap civilians in towns and villages inside Israel. At a music festival celebrating peace, Israel's equivalent of Music Midtown, terrorists moved through the crowd, shooting and rounding up people for rape, torture, and immolation. When people hid in groups or shelters, they just threw in grenades. Another 240 people were dragged back into Gaza as hostages. Among those murdered were citizens of countries from around the world, at least 31 U.S. citizens, and 39 French citizens, and at least 34 Thai nationals, because many workers from Asian countries come to Israel seeking opportunity. These attacks were not on what some call, quote-unquote, "settlements," on land under debate since 1967. These were towns, these were farmers, and they were inside Israel's 1948 borders as legally constituted. Hamas's goal was to spark a war, to stop the Abraham Accords. And to do so, they put their own civilians between Israeli children and those who need to rescue them. A little less than two weeks ago, Israel agreed to essentially what is a ceasefire in order to get back their children who were taken hostage, some of whom had been branded on their bodies and held without food. In return, Israel freed criminals convicted of crimes, including stabbing of Israelis and attempted car bombings. Hamas broke that ceasefire by continuously firing rockets into Israel, having operatives shoot and slay three Israeli civilians at a bus stop in Jerusalem, and refusing to release any more of the women it was holding against their own agreement. A ceasefire like we are hearing will not solve this crisis. Hamas believes every inch of Israel is occupied territory, and its founding charter calls for the destruction of Israel and Jews everywhere in the world, including those who live in our country, including my family. Not to mention the other 150,000 Jewish Georgians. Hamas sympathizers and pro-Hamas protesters have carried out acts of intimidation, vandalism, and assault against Jews around the world, including on our own Georgia college campuses. But this is not just about Jews or Israel. Hamas leaders have also said that Christians and any others who do not subscribe to their particular fundamentalist approach are targets and will be next. Their leaders have also repeatedly said that October 7th was merely a rehearsal, and that they will commit the same atrocities again and again and again. Israel's constitution calls for peaceful coexistence with all residents of the region. Proof of that is that over 20% of its citizens are Arab, who have every same right extended to every other citizen. They serve in the Knesset and on Israel's Supreme Court. Arab Muslims of, citizens of Israel, especially women and members of the LGBTQ community, have more rights in Israel than any other country in the Middle East. Condemning Hamas is literally the least we can do. We should demand this of every member of the civilized world, the way we ask nations to band together to defeat Al Qaeda after 9/11 and ISIS. This is the easiest moral test of our time. Stand with Hamas, a U.S.-designated terror organization, or with all of its victims. Some have noted that this resolution says nothing about Palestinians as a larger group. Georgians may have different views on our, on their aspirations and the best resolution of many interlock conflicts affecting multiple countries and ethnic groups in the Middle East. That is not what this war is about. This is not a microcosm of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. This is a bloodthirsty, genocidal regime openly promising to continue slaughtering innocent Jews as soon as it is able to do so. This resolution is a statement on a specific organization, Hamas, and not only takes children hostage, but operates from civilian areas, using hospitals and schools as bases, and is responsible for the deaths of thousands of innocent Palestinian men, women, and children under its control. Aid sent by the United States has been misused, fuel and sewer pipes have been used to build rockets, and cement that should be going into homes was used to make tunnels and store weapons. If you believe, as I do, that Palestinians are held hostage to Hamas, then you too should support ridding the world of Hamas. I didn't draft this resolution, but I'm grateful to Representative Cox, who did. No one else filed anything, even those who keep telling me how sad they are about the rise of antisemitism. Perfection should never be the enemy of the good. This fight against terror should be nonpartisan. If we can't come together as Georgians and condemn Hamas, what does that tell our citizens? If you believe a resolution is truthful but just not as comprehensive as you like, you had the chance to bring your own. There is no shortage of paper in this chamber. But do not punish those that hate Hamas by vote, by no voting, or by walking. Hamas openly wants to kill every single Jew in Georgia. Your walking or no vote tells the Jewish community in Georgia that their lives don't matter. And because one of my colleagues decided to mention an organization that was here, I feel the need to respond to it. They mentioned Jewish Voices for Peace. You should all know that 90 to 95% of Jews are Zionist. We believe in the right of Jewish self-determination. That is Zionism. The fringe of the fringe, don't believe it and actively work against it. They are essentially the West Barrow Baptist Church to Christians. And don't forget, throughout history, there have been those that appease the, the people who harm, try to harm them. And to them, I say, Hamas will kill you too. Pastor May this morning talked about the Samaritan looking at the Jew as a person. That's what we are asking you all to do. Thank you. Oh, I'm, one more thing. To the Jews of Georgia, we hear you, we see you. I wish you a happy Hanukkah, the original Zionist holiday, and Am Yisrael Chai, the people of Israel live. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I yield.
The lady has yielded the well. Representative Jenkins has recognized to speak to the resolution.
Mr. Speaker, friends, today I rise in support of House Resolution 4EX. I won't restate what's already been said here, I've been moved by all the testimony so far. The graphic description contained in the very resolution should leave no one to question the truly evil nature of the beast that we face here in Hamas. I want to take time to discuss some other aspects of this conflict that I feel cannot remain unsaid. First, we must acknowledge that this is a complex issue, and there is no easy solution. One of my favorite sources that understands the Israel-Palestinian conflict best is Georgia's own Jimmy Carter. He's one of the world's foremost experts on the Middle East and one of the world's greatest peacemakers. I encourage each of you to study his work. I find his wisdom from Plains, Georgia, easier for me to understand than some of the other experts on this issue. In this entire process, peace is something that we cannot lose sight of. Americans fight for peace, not war. I expect our allies who receive American military aid to do the same. As the horrors of this crisis have unfolded over the past few months, I've often thought how much the world needs President Carter's leadership today. The world needs a peacemaker. But President Carter is in hospice in Plains, and I'm here in the General Assembly. I cannot match his expertise, but I'll at least try to purvey the compassion that he put into his work. I reluctantly step into the well to speak about this. I assure you, the last place I want to be is in the well of the General Assembly, talk about world politics in the Middle East. But I come to you as a retired Army officer. I spent about 15 years in the 101st Airborne Division, where I spent four years in combat in the Middle East. Operations of note was the invasion of Iraq, where we removed Saddam Hussein and, and the Ba'ath Party, who had brutally ruled Iraq for over 30 years. In 2010, I served in the surge that liberated Kandahar from the Taliban and allowed displaced Afghan refugees to return to their homes for the first time in years. My last and most rewarding tour saw me embedded with the Afghan Air Force, where I mentored senior Afghan officers who were educated in Moscow during the Soviet occupation of that country. The commander of the Afghan Air Force had been a cosmonaut in the Soviet space program. But during this assignment, my interpreter was an elderly gentleman who escaped Afghanistan during the same period, because his family was brutally persecuted by the same Soviet government that, that trained the folks that we were there to work with. My entire military career has been spent on counterterrorism operations and nation-building in the Middle East. As we condemn the attacks on October 7th, we must recommend, recognize that these attacks are part of a continuous cycle of violence dating back over 100 years. We all know this, let no one tell you differently. Those that study this conflict recognize that violence in Gaza was imminent. This is important, because we all must know that putting things back as they were at the beginning of October, if that were even possible, is no road to peace.